Okay, good quiet, please. Shh. Thank you. Good morning and welcome to the New York City Hybrid Hearing on a Committee on Finance. Please silent all electronic devices. Also, please do not approach the deas during or after the hearing. If you have any questions, please raise your hand and one of us, the Sergeant at Arms, will kindly assist you. Thank you very much for the kind cooperation. Chair, we're ready to begin.
Thank you, Sergeant. Okay, good morning and welcome to today's Finance Committee meeting. I'm Councilmember Justin Brannon. I have the privilege of chairing the Committee on Finance. We've been joined this morning by Councilmembers Wrestler, Hudson, Brooks Powers, Powers, Lewis, Carr, Brewer, Farias, Ose, Sanchez, and Williams. And on Zoom, we've been joined by Moya, Ayala, and Hanks. Today, the Committee on Finance will be voting on four property tax exemptions. Just quickly, a brief note for the record. Typically, committee meetings for these items are just a vote and no public testimony is taken for votes. However, due to a technical error with the council website, today's session was initially listed as a public hearing and several people signed up to speak before the error was corrected. So in good faith, we are going to invite these people to appear and give testimony for this time only. The first resolution is a renewal of a partial 40-year Article V tax exemption for one building in Councilmember Abreu's district. As part of the renewal, affordability will be continued at 50% AMI with 30% of units set aside for homeless tenants and identified capital work will be completed along with HPD's aging-in-place improvements. The second resolution is a full 40-year Article XI exemption for new construction in one building in Councilmember Holden's district. The project will be 100% affordable building of 120 units with AMIs restricted from 30 to 90% with up to 18 units set aside for formerly homeless tenants and eight of which are designated for homeless veterans under the HUD Veterans Affairs Support Housing Program. The third resolution is a conversion of two Article XI Mitchell Lama buildings in Councilmember Wrestler's district to a partial 40-year Article, sorry, to a partial Article XI. The Mitchell Lamas Cooperative has voted in favor of converting to a HDFC cooperative under HPD's Article II to Article XI conversion program to facilitate long-term affordability. As part of its plan of reconstitution accepted by the New York State Attorney General's Office, shareholders will be subject to a 99-year regulatory agreement where shareholders' maximum income will be, will continue to be capped at 125% of AMI with resale prices set to be affordable for individuals and families at 80% of the AMI. As part of the agreement, it is proposed that 50% of the proceeds of future sales will go into reserves to refund, to fund rehab work and/or pay off the existing debt. The final resolution is a full 40-year Article XI exemption for new construction of one rental building in Councilmember Botcher's district. The building will contain 175 affordable units for households with at least one senior and one superintendent unit. All units will be affordable to older adults, to older adult households at 50% AMI with 30% of units set aside for formerly homeless households. Are there any comments or questions from my colleagues on these items? Okay. I've also been joined by Councilmember Salam. Okay, so now we're going to turn to those who signed up previously to allow their testimony. Okay, we're gonna, we're gonna allow Councilmember Wrestler to give remarks and then we'll Just a, just a reminder that this is a government proceeding and that decorum shall be observed at all times. As such, members of the public shall remain silent at all times except for those who are speaking.
Thank you so much, Chair Brannon, and thanks to all my colleagues on the Finance Committee. It's, it's an honor to join you today. And I want to thank all of the folks who have joined us from across New York City and of course especially from Cadman Towers for being with us. And I grew up two blocks away from Cadman Towers. Some of my earliest memories are playing Sega Genesis and dancing badly to Michael Jackson at one of my best friends' Jay Franklin's house in Cadman. I have loved, you know, I have had many dear friends who have lived in Cadman over the course of my whole life. I want to be very clear about what's being considered today. This is a transition from one type of an affordable housing cooperative to another type of an affordable housing cooperative. And if this conversion is approved by Finance Committee and the council as a whole, we will preserve Cadman Towers as affordable housing for the next 99 years. We have a series of imperfect choices before us as council members. We have to weigh the pros and cons. We have to live in the real world and we have to act responsibly and be good stewards for the residents of Cadman Towers today and residents of Cadman Towers tomorrow. I feel like my primary responsibility here is to make sure that we preserve this as affordable housing and ensure that the resources are in place for the conditions to be what residents of Cadman deserve. Cadman is a 400-plus unit, 420-unit Mitchell Lama that is being considered for a transition, a conversion into an HDSC co-op. This is not a solution for the Mitchell Lama program writ large. This is a tailored, specific solution that meets the needs of Cadman Towers. And I want to be clear, they have significant needs. There are already $62 million in outstanding loans that Cadman is responsible for repaying. They have identified $36 million from a physical needs assessment from 2020 that we have not yet addressed. And that does not consider local law 97 compliance or additional capital needs that may have come about in the ensuing four years. Cadman has already reached the maximum debt-to-income ratio and would, and has not been able to secure any additional loans from the city or otherwise. The monthly maintenance costs for residents at Cadman have increased by 50% over the last three years, making it hard for current low-income residents there to continue to afford to live there. As a result, Cadman is pursuing this new approach that will generate more capital revenue to stabilize the conditions in this building for today and tomorrow. I want to be clear that today, if you're moving into Cadman Towers, the maximum AMI that you can make, the maximum income, is 125% AMI. If this conversion is approved, the maximum AMI remains at 125%. There currently, people can move into Cadman and afford it at about 50% AMI. If this conversion happens, people will need to be more like 80% AMI to be able to afford to live here. Unfortunately, if we don't approve this plan, I'm worried that the current low-income residents who are there will be squeezed out. And so we have a choice to make between hurting the existing low-income residents at Cadman or hurting future low-income residents who want to live at Cadman. And this plan allows us to generate the capital revenue that we need from the resales that will actually stabilize the conditions in the building. By transition, I, I just, I, I think, I want to say this. After years, many years of engagement and hundreds of meetings with Cadman residents and other stakeholders, I've come to the conclusion that this is a responsible plan, a responsible path forward for Cadman Towers. I'm not suggesting it as a solution for all of Mitchell Lama. But I know that 77% of Cadman residents voted in support of this. They have looked very carefully at what they can do to preserve their affordable housing and this is the plan that they've identified and I support them. So I'm, I really want to thank my colleagues and Chair Brannon for the opportunity to say a few words and I hope you'll consider supporting this today. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Wrestler. We've also been joined by Councilmember Stevens. Okay, so as a reminder, before we get into public testimony, I want to make sure that we're being respectful and reminder that this is a government proceeding. So everyone who isn't testifying should remain silent so we can hear everybody. The witness table is reserved for people giving testimony. No video recording or photography is allowed from the witness table. Further, members of the public may not present audio or video recordings as testimony, but they may submit transcripts of such recordings to the Sergeant at Arms for inclusion in the hearing record. If the invitees have not done so, please make sure you filled out an appearance card with the Sergeant at Arms and wait to be recognized. Once recognized, you'll have two minutes to speak on the resolutions on today's agenda. If you have a written statement or additional written testimony you wish to submit for the record, please provide a copy of that testimony to the Sergeant at Arms. You may also email written, written remarks to testimony@council.nyc.gov. Within 72 hours of the conclusion of this meeting, audio and video recordings will be accepted. So now we're gonna call up our first panel. Forgive me if I mispronounce your name. Amna Ahmad, Richard Heitler, Barry Cohen, Andrea Hockland, and Jay Howbin, and Marnie So Marnie Rhine, Jay Howbin, Andrea Hockland, Barry Cohen, Richard Heitler, and Amna Ahmad. You'll each have two minutes. Do you have chairs? Okay, if you want to go right from left, just say your name and you can begin your testimony. Each, everyone has two minutes. Make sure your mic is on.
Good morning. How about now?
Great, go ahead.
Thank you. My name is Amna Ahmed. I'm on the waitlist at Cadman Towers and have been for about five years. My understanding is that I'm fourth in line for a two-bedroom at this moment. I'm an editor in my work and I've worked mostly in media and publishing roles. I am exactly who the Mitchell Lama program is for. It's for regular working people who don't have a trust fund or family money and aren't in finance or some other high-paying industry, which I know is true of a lot of you as well. I live in a non-rent stabilized apartment currently in Brooklyn, where I have been for almost 15 years now with my nine-year-old daughter. When I first moved into my apartment, my rent was $1,250 a month. It has almost doubled since then and my income has very much not doubled since then. The rent goes up every year by whatever amount the landlord wishes and it's not predictable from year to year. So I breathed a major sigh of relief when I got on the waiting list at Cadman. It was a promise of stability. It's a chance to pay a fair amount for housing that's not, bless you, that's not extortionate because it's not meant to enrich landlords or speculators. Not all stakeholders in this decision got a vote. I have a major stake in this decision. I'm on the waitlist, I pay taxes, and I didn't get a say in whether the residents could wipe out the waiting list and vote themselves a big windfall profit because the waiting list will go away the moment this conversion is finalized. What's even more offensive to me is that as a taxpayer, I would be subsidizing my own exclusion and paying for their unearned profit. This is what's driving the efforts to leave the program. Under the plan they want, outgoing share, I think Mr. Brannon mentioned that 50% of the profit from a sale would go back into the building's coffers. I'm not sure he mentioned that the other 50% would go to the outgoing shareholder. There is absolutely no rationale for shareholders to profit if the stated goal is to get funds for capital repairs and building maintenance. If that were their sincere intention, any profit would go back into the building, which is not happening here. And I believe that this part...
You can conclude.
This part really lays bare what the true motivation is here for converting. When I got a log number in the lottery about five years ago, my understanding was that it was a promise, that there would be a wait. People wait sometimes decades for their turn at a Mitchell Lama apartment. I knew it would be some years, but that eventually I would be offered an apartment. It was a promise. This attempt to take Cadman Towers out of the Mitchell Lama program would break that promise. So while this is obviously very personal to me as someone who has, who's on the waitlist, it's way bigger than me or any individual who's here. There are 62,000 units citywide in the Mitchell Lama program right now. Cadman Towers is the very first development where they're attempting this kind of 2-11 conversion. And if it's allowed to proceed, every single Mitchell Lama building with residents who dream of privatizing, which is all of them, will be trying to do the same. They're, they're, you're ready to do that today after this hearing. And it will wipe out the program citywide. I'm asking you to vote no and to keep Cadman Towers a Mitchell Lama. Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead. Just say your name before you begin, please.
My name is Barry Cohen. I'm a resident of a Mitchell Lama co-op on the Upper West Side of Manhattan. In preparation for this meeting, we had the opportunity to consult with quite a few members of the Finance Committee. And many of them told us about this concept of member deference, that if an issue is of local concern, then they defer to the expertise of the council member of that, in that district, to decide the issue. This is decidedly not such a case. What we are doing here is setting a policy that has citywide implications. As Amna just eloquently described, the interests of more people who are on the waiting list than voted for privatization will be vaporized if in fact this conversion occurs. The interests of millions of taxpayers around the city who have put more investment into this development than has been put in by the residents of the development will be handed out in the form of lottery tickets, not to the people who are waiting to get affordable housing, but to the people who are waiting to cash out that public investment for their personal benefit. These people, those on the waiting list, I should say one other thing, that it will profoundly disrupt the governance of Mitchell Lamas across the city to be waiving this incentive in front of them. Instead of paying attention to the governance of their buildings, they will, and we already are, singularly focused instead on getting this pot of gold at the end of the rainbow. So I think it's a very simple matter. If you consider the citywide interests involved here, the right way to vote, the easy decision should, to make, should be to vote no.
Thank you.
Good morning, Chairperson Brannon and Councilmembers of the Finance Committee. My name is Marnie Rhine. I am a shareholder at a Mitchell Lama co-op in Queens. And my fellow Mitchell Lama advocates and I are here today to stand up for this truly affordable New York housing model. Do not reward Cadman Towers for leaving the Mitchell Lama program and voting themselves a windfall profit. This is not public policy that the New York City Council should be supporting. We need more Mitchell Lama housing, not less. This issue is not solely about Cadman Towers. If this resolution passes, every Mitchell Lama will be at risk of leaving the program, to include those in your districts. The conversion to an Article XI has been presented as the only way to raise funds for capital repairs. That is not the case. There are other funding avenues that are available. Additionally, were this the real reason for converting to an Article XI, there would be no reason to give a profit to outgoing shareholders. Once a co-op leaves the program, the cost to buy in skyrockets dramatically, pricing out most low and moderate-income New Yorkers. We are here today speaking for them. This issue deserves much greater attention and scrutiny. This is not a simple administrative item to vote on. This is about a citywide housing policy that affects 62,000 apartments and tens of thousands of diverse shareholders across New York City, as well as people currently on waiting lists. We are here today speaking for them. With a 2-11 conversion, the waiting lists for apartments in that development disappear, taking away the possibility of all those on the current waiting lists to attain true affordable housing. Be on the right side of history here and vote no. I say to you, elected council members, do not subsidize the destruction of affordable housing. Be the housing advocates you were elected to be and vote no on the resolution to grant a shelter rent tax exemption at Cadman Towers. Save Mitchell Lama.
Is it, is it on? I guess it is. Thank you. Thank you for hearing us. My name is Andrea Hockland and I'm a resident of a Mitchell Lama on the Upper East Side. My mother and I waited 11 years to receive a Mitchell Lama apartment. It was a long wait, but the result was joyous. During that waiting time, my mother developed cancer and could no longer work and did not have enough medical coverage. I worked relentlessly to support us and pay her medical bills. When we were able to live in our Mitchell Lama apartment, our worries were over. We had the security of knowing I didn't have to overwork and was also able to take care of her until her passing. I am what is considered a blue-collar worker, always employed but almost never cracked $50,000 in any year. I waited tables at a hotel that catered to one of the lifebloods of our city, tourists, as well as residents and surrounding workers. The ability to be able to work and pay a decent but not destructive maintenance has been a godsend for me and other fortunate Mitchell Lama residents. I keep reading about the lack of affordable housing. The solution is more Mitchell Lamas, not less. I recently read about a lottery for affordable housing where the minimum income required was $74,000. What? The majority of people who keep this city running make way less than that, but we pay our taxes and we vote and we show up and we volunteer and we make the city an inviting destination. We create community. 2-11 conversions are completely unnecessary and would destroy Mitchell Lama co-ops. Privatizers attempting this 2-11 scheme need the taxpayers of New York to continue to subsidize them at the same level as they received as a nonprofit Mitchell Lama. The 2-11 conversion scheme is the exact opposite of the city's commitment to affirmatively further fair housing. Supervised waiting lists and affordable purchase prices have made Mitchell Lama cooperatives some of the most diverse communities in the country. I implore you not to grant the shelter tax abatement to Cadman Towers or any Mitchell Lama that chooses to leave the Mitchell Lama program.
Thank you.
Hello, council members. My name is Jay Howbin.
You could, you could pull that mic closer.
I don't think so.
Hello, council members. Thank you for this opportunity to speak before you vote. My name is Jay Howbin. I live in a Mitchell Lama co-op on the Upper West Side. I've lived the 53 of my 83 years in New York City subsidized housing. It's made it possible, without much income, to have a decent apartment and wonderful neighbors and a collective and cooperative experience. I implore you, like the others, to consider seriously whether making this tax exemption will affect just one, the whole Mitchell Lama program. And so I'd like to read my statement in that context. If this were a one-district issue, it would be honorable to respect district member deference. But this is a citywide issue. As soon as the whole city council votes to grant this tax break to this co-op that wants to leave the Mitchell Lama program, the 400 or more people on the waiting list lose their chance of a decent affordable apartment at Cadman Towers. And as Amma said, they didn't have a vote in this. The only people that voted were people that had the possibility of making a profit when they leave, sell their shares. But they've already had a profit. They lived in Mitchell Lama. It's very profitable. You pay less each month and you have a fuller life because of the money that that saves you. Also, in my co-op and many of the other co-ops, there are about 84 left, this, this vote, not your vote, the vote of the full council if it accepts this exemption, would set the floodgates open for the very, very painful and tense fight between neighbors. Shall we stay in Mitchell Lama or shall we go to 2-11? We've had that fight before of all privatization and it's very painful. There are constituents in every council member district affected by this. The fact that city council members are lining up behind Gail Brewer's bill shows this is a citywide issue, not a district issue. But you have been asked to consider it as if it was just one co-op in one district. Again, I say this is a citywide issue. Vote no tax break for leaving Mitchell Lama social housing, not for this co-op today and not for any of the co-ops with. Vote for your council member Brewer's bill when you have a chance.
Thank you.
But don't let him get this one today. Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Hi, my name is Richard Heitler. I am actually going to put aside my prepared notes because some of my colleagues has said some of these points so eloquently and I will not repeat them. I will restrict my remarks to the claim that there is no other way for Cadman to finance their capital needs except by leaving the program and becoming an Article XI. Cadman has been trying to privatize for about 12 years. During that same time period, co-ops all over the city in our network have refinanced and have brought in more money than Cadman is looking for to meet their current capital needs. In no case was the existing debt an obstacle to refinancing. These co-ops, and I could, I don't have a scientific survey, this is our network. Inwood Towers, Village View, Village East, Stryker's Bay, Rosalie Manning, RNA, Co-op City have all refinanced. I'm not making this, this is real. And they have used a creative combination of interest rate reductions, time extensions, grants, local like REZA or state like NYSERTA or federal. They have gone to a wide variety of lenders, HPD, HFA, HDC, private banks with HUD and Freddie Mac guarantees, and it's all worked. And again, they have brought in millions. A 109-unit co-op brought in $15 million. Cadman is looking for 36. This is a building that is one-fourth the size of Cadman at 109 units. They brought in 15. Do the math. All I'm saying is, that claim is bogus. I know of no instance where the HPD that we know and love has declined to consider funding a co-op's legitimate capital needs. Has this board even applied? This is a issue, if it were true, if HPD was declining to fund Cadman's capital needs and was therefore pushing them into Article XI, I believe this is an issue that the Housing Committee would very much want to consider.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we're now going to call up our next panel. Pardon if I mispronounce your name. Erica Buckley, Carolyn Mulgan, Mary Forte, Toba Potatski, Shelley Holberg. Shelley Holberg, Toba Potatski, Mary Forte, huh? Okay, whenever you're ready, you can begin. Just make sure the mic is on, say your name before you begin.
It's on. Okay, my name is Shelley Hultsberg. I'm the vice president of the Board of Cadman Towers. I'm also the head of the senior committee, which you'll hear about. Let me introduce you to Cadman Towers. We're two buildings and one community. I want to thank the city council and our representative for funding that has made it possible for us to have a NORC-like possible for us to have a NORC-like program that has enriched the lives of many cooperators and made Cadman so special. We have a nurse one day a week to deal with physical needs. We have a social worker two days a week to deal with emotional and support issues. We also have lectures, trips, and have created a safe, healthy environment for all. If I thought of two words to describe Cadman, it would be population stability. The cooperators and staff stay for years. Everyone knows each other and everyone basically looks out for each other. We recently faced a forty-two percent or fifty percent, which will happen soon, maintenance increase over three years. If I could turn the clock back fifty years, you would see that teachers and civil service workers came to live in Cadman. They are now retired and were most affected by the huge maintenance increase. They are living on fixed income, pension and social security, and found that it's quite difficult to deal with the feared, with the, deal with the increase and feared having to leave their home. It's the other population that's affected. They are not eligible for government programs like SCREE or Medicaid and feel that home will no longer be affordable. Article XI gives them the means of providing financial support for the future of capital projects and keeps us affordable. Vote yes for the tax abatement so Article XI can become a reality.
Good morning, Chairperson Brennan and members of the City Council Finance Committee. Thank you for this special opportunity to speak to you today on such an important subject as preserving Cadman Towers affordable housing. I have been a resident of Cadman Towers for close to forty years. I'm currently the Board President. I have been that, been in that position for eighteen years, and I'm here asking you for your vote to support our tax abatement. As Board President, I have a unique perspective that most, most residents and outsiders don't get to see. I sign all the invoices and all the expenditures, and I work very closely with all of our vendors, and I work closely with our property manager and our superintendent. It's not a secret, and it's been mentioned already, earlier, older buildings cost more money to manage. That's a fact. Cadman Towers just celebrated its fiftieth anniversary. This July, we have complete, we will have completed forty million dollars of capital repairs over, and it took over a five-year period, so we'll be happy to get rid of the scaffolding. But those are things that are standard, that are required, that is expected, that you as, as councilmembers and expect from us. Resurfacing the facade, we put in five new elevators, new roofs, restoration of our garages, waterproofing of our exterior plaza. We are without a doubt rebuilding Cadman Towers for the next fifty years and for the next generation. But as a result of the new construction costs and our existing debt, and just so you know, we're carrying debt that was held over, that was deferred from nineteen-seventy-seven, we're still carrying it over now because people felt, well, nobody pays that debt. That is, that's an incorrect misnomer. Okay, but our current debt, and it was mentioned before, is a total of sixty-two million dollars, and it is growing. Some of it at a rate of five-point-one-eight percent. Oh, shoot. Can I, okay, okay, in two months, this is important, in two months, we'll be start, we'll begin paying one-point-nine million dollars a year, every year, for the next thirty-five years. That's not fake, that's not false, that's reality, and it starts in two months, one-point-nine million every year. To handle this, we were forced to raise maintenance fifty percent since twenty-eighteen. That maxes out our debt-to-earnings ratio, right? So that maxes out our ability to borrow money. We didn't make that up. You know who told us that? HDC, our lender, right? So it's not something, and we go to HTDC and HPD, and we fight with them all the time for every penny that we could possibly get. We have had conversations with them where they say, well, you can't get an eight-day loan because we reserve it for your, another Mitchell Lama. We said, we need an eight-day loan, and we fought it, and we got it. But, so we go to every lender, and we go, and we fight for every penny that we can get, but we are maxed out now. And, and the problem that we have is, is that we have thirty million dollars of, of projects in twenty-twenty-three numbers, right? So you know that that's going to be greater once we finally get to doing that. And those are things like, important things like boilers, replacing our fifty-year-old boilers, electrical, so electrical is very big, and we want to be a leader in Local Law Ninety-seven, but guess what? All of our circuit breaker boxes in our apartments have to be replaced, and that's four-hundred-and-twenty-one circuit breaker boxes in every, and we have to upgrade our electrical system. These are not made-up things, these are not, it's not, well, I don't like it, I don't like this plan for this. This is the reality that, that we as, as board members and shareholders have to, have to deal with on a regular basis. The one thing that Mary, our property manager, who you hear from, and it said, repairs are not finite, they are infinite, including the ones that you don't plan for, like, three months ago, four water main pipes broke in the street, unfortunately at midnight on a Saturday, and flooded our, our.
Please wrap it up.
Okay, our lobby and, or in our basement, and we, and we had to pay for new sidewalks. That was four-hundred thousand dollars, that was not covered by insurance. Okay, I'm going to go to, I'm going to finish up. You're going to hear, you're going to hear more about our plan from this. So anyway, after five years, now, this is a plan that came to us in twenty-eighteen, we held eighty meetings, eighty shareholder meetings, eighty, on the single topic of our financing, our capital repairs, and how we were going to fund them. And after that, we held a vote in, in just this past August, and of the four-hundred-and-ten shareholders that came to me, and they had a month to vote, seventy-seven percent voted yes. Out of four-hundred-and-ten eligible shareholders, three-hundred-and-fourteen voted yes. That's not anything that's being said here. I know I got to wrap up, I just want to say something that's really wonderful. We here, all of us collected, doesn't matter what your side is this, have dedicated ourselves to affordable housing. How awesome is that? How awesome is that? And thank you for your time today.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to keep everyone to a strict two minutes because we do have to vote.
Good morning.
Good morning. Just say your name before you begin, please.
My name is Carolyn Minjia, and, and I live at Cadman Towers. It's my home. It's been my home for ten years. My great-aunt purchased the apartment in nineteen-seventy-seven, and I only came here in September twenty-fourteen because my aunt was down and sick, and I came to take care of her. Being here in New York, my health deteriorated because of the, the stress of being here. But this is my home now. I need the security that this place brings me. I, I need someone at the front door to look out for me, the ambulances that have come for me, the specialists that I have to have now because being in this city have aggravated my condition so. But I've never heard of Mitchell Lama. I'm from Philadelphia thirty-eight years. I've never heard of that. I've never heard of a housing thing that doesn't have an arm to take care of structural things, repair things. I've never heard of a thing. But there's no arm to do that in Mitchell Lama. We got to come up with it, I don't know, selling cookies or lemonade stands, we, we have to come up with the money, and I understand we have. We've done our best. There's been increases that I can't believe. I've been on permanent disability since nineteen-ninety-eight, and I don't make any more money. I can't get it out of the wind. I want to live here, I intend to live here till they carry me out, and I want this place to be here so the new generation will come and live in affordable housing. It can be affordable if we just try this new article. We're not, we, we want to be affordable. We want everybody to come and enjoy this wonderful place that Shelley has talked about.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
Good morning, everybody. My name is Mary Egri, and I'm the property manager for Cadman Towers. Thank you very much for the opportunity to come here today and speak about the Article Two-to-eleven conversion as it relates to apartment, apartment affordability and improved access to homeownership and an affordable development. This program was initially put together between the Board of Directors at Cadman Towers and Rick, the, the former Rick Froelich of HDC, he's passed on at this point. When he initially brought, when we, they were initially developing the numbers for this program, Rick had recommended that we peg it at a hundred percent of AMI, and we ran the numbers on that, and we did the analysis, and the Board of Directors, the leadership at Cadman, determined that we can do better. At a hundred percent of AMI, we were really at the higher end of the moderate income range, and we wanted to make sure that our program captured low-income people, people in the low-income range, which is seventy-nine percent of AMI are down. And so then we worked the numbers, we got, that's how we got down to the eighty percent of AMI number. At eighty percent of AMI, we are capturing the upper range of low-income residents and the lower range of moderate income. So this program blends that lower, higher range of low-income and lower range of moderate The other thing that this does is it opens the, it presents greater opportunity for homeownership. What's the threshold to homeownership affordability? It's money. I'm a property manager, I process these applications for people that are on the waitlist, and I want to tell you how many people over the years have left my office in tears because they can't afford the forty, fifty, sixty thousand dollars it takes to get into a Mitchell Lama building. With this program, it lowers the threshold of homeownership down into the range of eighteen-thousand. In addition to that, the city has the Home First program, where the city will provide these applicants with up to twenty percent of their down payment and forgive that debt if they stay in the development for four years. This increases the availability of homeownership to low-income individuals.
Thank you.
You can't get financing with Mitchell Lama, you can with Article XI.
Thank you.
Thank you, committee members, for allowing me to address you today. My name is.
Quiet in here, please.
My name is Erica Buckley, and I'm an attorney at Nixon Peabody, and I'm Special Counsel for Cadman Towers. Prior to joining Nixon Peabody, I was the Chief of the Real Estate Finance Bureau at the Attorney General's Office, where I regulated New York's co-op and condo market, and prior to that, I was the General Counsel of the Urban Homesteading Assistance Board, which is a citywide organization that is dedicated to housing development fund corporations, otherwise known as HDFCs. My work with affordable co-ops started more than twenty years ago, when I joined UHAB. From day one, we were advocating for the types of changes you see in this plan for HDFC co-ops to ensure they would operate as affordable housing in perpetuity. The tax exemption before your committee today is for a model HDFC cooperative to be known as Cadman Towers Housing Development Fund Corporation. Through more than a decade of work, the Board and a majority of the shareholders at Cadman Towers have crafted what should be seen as the gold standard when we think about affordable homeownership in New York City. I'd like to highlight a few of the points that make Cadman Towers HDFC the gold standard. There will be a ninety-nine-year regulatory agreement to ensure affordability in perpetuity. The AMI caps will be at a hundred-and-twenty-five percent of AMI, which are the exact same AMI caps for Mitchell Lamas. There will be fixed resale prices with affordability set at eighty percent of the area median income. There are primary residency requirements, there are surcharges for over-income shareholders, there are strict parameters for succession rights, there is a flip tax at fifty percent, even though HPD's term sheet only requires three percent, and there is also going to be the requirement to use HPD Housing Connect to fill vacancies as they come about. There are other aspects of Cadman's plan that I think make it a gold standard when we're talking about affordable housing in New York City. As panelists have said, this co-op has been coming up, trying to come up with a solution for many years, but this plan started when Rich Froelich from HDC recommended it as a solution to help Cadman meet their various ongoing capital needs and their goal of remaining affordable in perpetuity. As Toba and other panelists have said, this board held fifty meetings in twenty-twenty-three alone to ensure that the community made a very informed decision about their future. And I want to just be clear here, democracy has spoken at Cadman Towers. Seventy-seven percent of the shareholders voted to take advantage of this option.
Thank you.
And there's nothing that should happen to stop the will of the people. This is a very reasonable plan, and I hope that you will vote in favor of it today. Thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Brewer has a question. We have two minutes for each question.
Thank you. My first question for whomever is, my understanding from the previous panel is that there is a wiped-out waitlist. Can you respond to that? And second, my understanding also, because on the Upper West Side, I have many, many, many Mitchell Lamas, and I've been working with them for the last forty years, and I know people who have gotten financing as a regular Mitchell Lama, so I'm just wondering why you think that's not possible. And then finally, the next group of shareholders after the initial, and time goes on, wouldn't that have to be something, as, as you add the flip tax and the fifty percent to the individuals, I do think it's going to become increasingly unaffordable for the constituency we're trying to put into Mitchell Lamas. Could you comment on those three topics, please?
I can speak to the waiting list. HPD, the, the way that they construct these lists is that, in theory, there's enough people on the list to last you for ten years, because there's expense involved with processing the applications and doing the advertising. So for my building, that means five hundred people. But I only, I'm speaking of one-bedrooms, by the way, I only have a turnover rate of anywhere from ten to twelve apartments, one-bedroom apartments per year. So ten times ten is a hundred, but HPD put five hundred people on my list. Why is that? Because they're aware of the attrition rate. Now, the, some of the, the people will drop off because they don't, don't bother to return their application. Other people drop off because when they make it to my office and they send them their offer letter, they don't have the money for, to buy into the building. More than half of the people I send letters to can't afford to get an apartment in my building. They just drop off, they give up. And who is affected most? Young people. Because they have student loans, they're just starting out in their career, maybe they're at, they're at the lower range of the AMI there, they don't have any savings, they don't have a.
You can finish.
So with this, with this program, first of all, we're going to get a brand-new waiting list through Housing Connect with HPD. We, we have to hire a HPD-approved marketing company to put together the list and administrate it, and these people will be vetted from the very beginning of the process so that they know that they qualify for apartments at Cadman Towers. In addition to that, now there's financing available. Finally, they can get some help with their down payment, and all of that is forgiven if they stay in the development for ten years.
So the old west, old list goes away. Thank you.
Yes, the people on the old list can now apply for Housing Connect and get back on the list.
Any other questions from my colleagues? Councilmember Wrestler.
Great, thanks so much. Just two questions. One, the previous panel indicated that there were additional city resources that were available that had been left on the table. Could you speak to what conversations have been had with HPD and HDC? Are there loans that could be made available to Cadman that have not been accessed, firstly? Second question, could you just break down, and Mary, maybe you could start with this one if you don't mind, what does somebody need upfront today to move in, in terms of cash, to move into Cadman, and what would somebody need if this conversion happened?
So today at Cadman, you need anywhere, depending on, I mean, we have one-bedrooms to three-bedroom apartments. The three-bedroom apartments, you're looking at over eighty thousand dollars. Some of the one-bedrooms start around forty-five, forty-two. But a lot of people that I encounter in my office don't have that kind of money in a bank account and don't have any way to access.
Can you get a loan for that? A mortgage?
You may, no, you can't get a mortgage for that. Mortgages are not available to Mitchell Lama apartments. I haven't had anybody come in with a mortgage, I'm not aware of HPD approving mortgages, so.
So somebody today needs between sixty and eighty thousand dollars upfront to be able to move in without a mortgage?
Yeah, cash.
And if this conversion were to happen, could you give that breakdown?
Goes down to, goes down to around eighteen, twenty, twenty-two. In addition to that, as I said before, Housing, Housing, Housing First program will pay up to twenty percent of the down payment.
Got it.
It's up to a hundred thousand or twenty percent, whichever.
Both.
Twenty, it'll be twenty percent.
Twenty percent, and that gets forgiven.
Great. And then the second question, are there resources available from HPD and HDC for loans that, that Cadman has not taken advantage of?
Not that I'm aware, I mean, we've exhausted every program that we're aware of.
There's, there's, there's a big misnomer about all that. There's, there's, there's a big misnomer about all that stuff. So HPD and, and HDC, obviously they have limited resources. And so when you have a project, you could go to them and say, well, we have this project. Even though some of our debt is deferred, it's still, it's still on our books. And so with 62 million as we have now, at 62 million, we're, as I said, we're maxed out. We can't go to HPD or HDC, we would have to spend the next couple of years to pay down existing debt in order to maybe qualify for it. And remember, we are one of 84 other properties that we are competing for, for other money. I just want, if, if...
Yeah, we gotta wrap it up.
Okay, the other thing real quick about, that Councilmember Brewer brought up about the waiting list, and this is the truth about the waiting list. We have a three-bedroom waiting list that started in 2010, that has maybe turned over about four apartments in, in, since 2010. So, yes, some of the, what, some of those will go away. We actually, with the permission of HPD, went through those lists to say, is there anybody who changed, who changed it? So we have been very active in making sure that everybody who had an opportunity, because that list was so old and so slow. So we've done everything we can to be responsible to get as many people as possible in.
Thank you. Okay, no further speakers, no further questions, I'm gonna ask Billy Martin, the committee clerk, to call the roll.
Excuse me, good morning. Good morning, William Martin, committee clerk, as roll call vote Committee on Finance. All items are coupled on today's agenda. Chair Brennan.
I vote aye.
Ayala.
I vote aye.
Moya. Powers.
Just permission to explain my vote?
Yes, of course.
Thanks. I want to appreciate, I just wanted to recognize and appreciate the work being done here by many folks citywide to preserve the really important Mitchell Lama program, which has been a hallmark program of affordability in the city and deemed a success, I think, in many ways for a pathway to affordable homeownerships. And that's why, you know, myself and others have raised concerns about conversions away from Mitchell Lama in the past. And particularly when we're talking about full removal of the program for private purposes, which is something that I oppose for a number of reasons. I think as noted, it's possible the program that we're discussing today isn't going to work for every building. And I do think, in this case, the program does work for this particular instance in this building. And I agree with Councilmember Wrestler that if you think the facts of the entire program don't work for every building, it sounds like, listening to the hearing today and doing some research, this particular building is an instance where preserving affordability, not going fully private, does make sense. And I do think this is a one-side proposal, not relying on member deference or deferral opinion or anything like that. I think there's a, conditions and factors here particularly make this a reasonable case for staying within an affordable housing program and not going private. So I'm gonna vote yes on this for the 99 years of affordability, a pathway out of debt, and a lot of other instances here. I do know other colleagues who are here working on solutions to a larger equation here in the city, which I am very eager to engage in and to pursue. But for the folks at Cadman Plaza, I think have worked very long and hard here, 77% vote and other factors, I think, have made a strong case in this particular instance for receiving the benefit they're doing. It's not a one-size-fits-all perhaps for everyone, but I think in this one, it, it works, so I'm voting yes. Thanks.
I vote aye.
Brooks Powers.
Permission to explain my vote?
Yes.
So to, oh, thank you. Thank you. So while today's decision is not one that I take lightly, I've had an opportunity to talk with some of the advocates off the peninsula about this issue. And I'm very much supportive of affordable homeownership and respect my colleagues, and especially respecting my colleagues' understanding, their community. And hearing today's testimony was extremely compelling, I'll say. But in this instant, our council member, Councilmember Wrestler, has conveyed to us how critically important this moment is for this community to preserve affordable homeownership for 99 years. And so with that, I am gonna vote aye.
Councilmember Moya.
Yes, I vote aye.
Thank you. Brewer.
Permission to say something?
Yes.
So I am gonna vote no, and I'll tell you why. I think that Mitchell Lama, as we know, as it is, is the best program ever in terms of housing. And to go from 2 to 12 conversion, I do think it's an abuse of Article 11. It's contrary to Article 11's basic legislative purpose. It was created to increase the supply of safe and sanitary dwelling accommodations at rentals, which families and persons of low income can afford. And that, to me, talks about the HDFCs that we've all worked on that go from TIL to HDFCs, not a Mitchell Lama. It was a great instrument for them, but converting a Mitchell Lama co-op to Article 11 goes in exactly the opposite direction. Mitchell Lama co-ops, and there are 84 more that we have to be considering, are the products of the best program producing generally affordable social housing in New York. Should never be used to remove buildings from that program to create something less affordable. And I do believe, as time goes on, despite what we've heard, these units will become less affordable and less well-regulated. Sheltered rent tax exemptions, which is part of the Mitchell Lama program, where the resale policy using a not-for-profit model, is what we should be talking about. It should never be used to subsidize windfall profits for selling shareholders. That's what I think Article 11 would allow. So I'm voting no. I want to make it clear that we do have a bill that is being drafted on the subject of tax breaks for conversions of Mitchell Lama co-op from 2 to 11. And I hope that all of my colleagues will sign on. Thank you very much.
Farias.
I vote aye.
Hanks.
I vote aye.
Thank you. Hudson.
I'm so sorry. Thanks, guys, I'm so sorry. I'm okay. If it happens again, I'll leave.
No need to apologize. You okay?
I'm good, thanks.
Permission to explain my vote?
Yes.
I'm deeply concerned with the prospect of a trend in which existing affordable Mitchell Lama developments convert to HDFC co-ops with Article 11 tax exemptions. The Mitchell Lama program is one of the remaining truly affordable housing programs in our city and must be protected at all costs. And at the same time, we must also take a tailored approach to all buildings to address their unique conditions and ensure low-income tenants, many of whom are older adults, can age in place with dignity. As chair of the Committee on Aging, providing New Yorkers an opportunity to age safely and with dignity in place is a top priority. Cadman has tens of millions of dollars in outstanding loans and additional capital needs, and it has already reached the maximum debt-to-income ratio and would struggle to secure any additional loans. And even if Cadman can secure more loans, it would require greater maintenance increases that would make the building unaffordable for low-income shareholders and those on a fixed income. This transition will ensure Cadman remains affordable housing for the next 99 years. And I just want to say, also, I, I agree with the, the remarks of many of my colleagues, but particularly those of Councilmember Powers. I think the testimony today has been incredibly compelling. I've literally been changing my mind in real time based on what I've been hearing. This decision is a very, very difficult decision. And I think oftentimes, what this body is, is forced to contend with is decisions like this one that are, that are very difficult. But with all that I've heard today, I'm, I'm voting aye. Thank you.
Ose.
Permission to explain my vote?
Yes.
I, I would consider myself a pretty staunch advocate for affordable housing. And I truly do understand the importance of Mitchell Lama buildings and, and their hold in our city. I really do appreciate also everyone who came out today and testified and shared their views of, of this process. But in this specific case, I, I really do want to defer to the expertise of the local council member. As I've heard and, from him, you know, he's been aware and working on this, this situation for, for some time now. And then also, you know, just hearing how the residents have voted sizably in, in favor of this. And with all that to consider, I also vote aye. Thank you.
Carr.
Aye.
Sanchez.
Permission to explain my vote?
Yes.
Thank you, Chair. Cities of New York are cities of opportunity. And if we don't provide people to come here, to live here, to stay here, and to stay for generations, then we're failing. This is something I say often. And in this circumstance, I, I want to highlight the importance of Mitchell Lama buildings in providing deeply affordable homeownership opportunities. But this, this, this question before us, and, and the testimony has been very compelling, I, I will agree, is one that I personally, and the chair is gonna kick me under the table for this, but I, I personally want to see this conversation move further. Instead of only having this conversation around Cadman every time that we vote for an Article 11, every time that we produce affordable housing that is not providing the levels of affordability that we need, I think we should have this level of debate and conversation. And yet, my, my conclusion, similar to, to so many of my colleagues going through and, and understanding the financial dynamics at Cadman and understanding where, where we are, is that this is not privatization. This is an Article 2 to an Article 11, Article 11 is still maintaining affordability, not as deep affordable, affordability as, as the Mitchell Lama program. And so with that, I, I, I say that, you know, this is not a step that I want to see other Mitchell Lamas, a, a direction that I want to see other Mitchell Lamas go in, and that we need to have conversations. If, if there are colleagues that want to work on legislation that really forces the city of New York to have a path for Mitchell Lamas, then I, I want to be a part of that conversation because right now, we, we don't have that path. And I'm talking about Co-op City, I'm talking about, in, in my neighboring districts, Concourse Village, I'm talking about Tracy Towers. We do not have the options coming from the city of New York to preserve Mitchell Lama as they exist today. And so I think that that's the situation I understand Cadman to be in, and, and because of that, I, I vote aye today. Thank you.
Thank you. Stevens.
Permission to explain my vote?
Yeah.
So since I've gotten to council, one of the things that I've been really vocal and loud about is how we are not serving our co-ops, Mitchell Lamas, HFZCs. It has not been something that has been on the forefront. We do so much for renters in the city, and it's important and necessary because we have so many renters. But we have not had real conversation or put forth legislation to support this body of work. I do represent Concourse Village in my district. And understanding and always wanting to make sure that I am leaning into hearing what my colleagues have to say. But because we haven't, for me, done the real work around ensuring that we have had all the options and paths in us as legislators to push forward, at this time, I will have to abstain. Thank you.
Williams.
I vote aye.
Juan. Salam.
Permission to explain my vote?
Yeah.
So I am trying to wrap my mind around a lot of what's going on today. As I was a child who was raised in a Mitchell Lama. I actually was raised in the Schaumburg Plaza, they changed the name after the Central Park Jagger case to a new name, really trying to erase the history of that particular awful incident. And as I understand what, in a limited way, what's happening today, I am realizing that this is trying to make the best of a very bad situation and trying to find a way forward. Normally, I would probably vote no. Normally, I would probably abstain. But in this particular instance, and while we, we do have some, some, some relief, I'm hoping that is coming down the pipe, I'm gonna vote aye on this. But I would like for my concerns to be associated with all of the concerns of our members. Thank you.
With a vote of 14 in the affirmative, one in the negative, and one abstention, items have been adopted by the committee.
Okay, with that, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.